Good evening, everyone. While we wait.
Ahem.
I do believe that the mayor is running a little bit behind and Mayor Pro Tim is gonna.
He is. Um, yeah, so good evening, everyone. Um, we have a quorum present, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is seven o'clock PM on Monday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our mayor is having a little bit of technical difficulty and needs to be reset the link, the Zoom link for the meeting. If somebody could take care of that, I'm sure he will be here as soon as he gets that and he can get us started with our agenda. Super speedy. Would you like to take it from here, Mr. Mayor? We just, we've been called to order, that's all.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. I'm sorry, I've had a little trouble with my links lately, guys, but I appreciate your going ahead. Thanks for calling the meeting to order. Glad to see everybody tonight as we gather together with our each other colleagues, friends, and staff and prepare for a good meeting tonight. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Councilmember Reese, would you please lead us in the pledge to the flag?
Happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues and members of the city council staff and residents watching. And I'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Mayor Shul, here. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeline.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reese.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now we'll move to ceremonial items. And the first ceremonial item is Fred Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties and the Constitution proclamation.
Native-born American citizens. And whereas after being jailed in California and subsequently sent to the Topaz War relocation center in Utah, Mr. Korematsu unsuccessfully challenged the relocation order in the US Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit and the US Supreme Court. And whereas President Ronald Reagan signed the Civil Liberties Act of nineteen eighty-eight issuing an apology and payment of compensation to individuals of Japanese descent who were interned during World War II and on January fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, President Bill Clinton awarded Mr. Korematsu the Presidential Medal of Freedom, America's highest civilian honor. And whereas until his death in two thousand and five, Fred Korematsu remained a tireless advocate for the constitutional rights of Americans to liberty, due process, and equality, without regard to race, religion, ethnicity, or national origin. Now, therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Fred Korematsu Day of Civil Liberties in the Constitution in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to contemplate the life of Fred Korematsu and the critical importance of preserving civil liberties even in times of real or perceived crisis and to take special note of this observance. Witness my hand, this is the fifteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that important remembrance, and I'm glad that you bring it to us every year, councilmember. And I know it's personally important to you and your family. Our second ceremonial item is the Code for Durham Day proclamation. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Freeline if he will do the honors. But I'm going to also ask Madam Clerk if you could make Celeste Ritchie available to. Could you upgrade her to a panelist? And Ms. Ritchie is going to be receiving this proclamation. And I see that she is able to be heard. And after, after Councilmember Freeline released the proclamation, Ms. Ritchie, I hope will have some brief comments for us. Councilmember Freeline.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Whereas Code for Durham is a brigade of Code for America, a network of volunteers helping government work for the people by the people in the digital age. They are focused on creating government services that are simple, effective, and easy to use, making our community a better place to work, live, and play. These volunteers have collectively spent thousands of hours developing better solutions for our community. And whereas Code for Durham is part of Durham's workforce development, offering the opportunity to help others learn digital skills and introduce new communities to the tech world. Code for Durham is also a form of community engagement where residents learn about their city, how their government works, and are part of building solutions. And whereas Code for Durham has partnered with the City of Durham, conserving taxpayer dollars and streamlining services to improve outcomes related to ending hunger, keeping our waterways clean, and the city's own website. And whereas in partnership with the Durham Expunction and Restoration Project, the Code for Durham team developed a tool that takes data from an individual's criminal record and automatically populates the correct petition forms for expulsion. This tool reduces a lengthy manual data process down to a few clicks, reducing human error and allowing attorneys to serve more people. Access to record expulsion is an important equity issue, and this tool allows Durham to scale these services much faster. And whereas Code for Durham stands ready to continue partnering with the City of Durham to aid in our recovery from the pandemic, to thrive in increasingly digital times, and to develop smart solutions that improve the lives of all Durhamites now. Therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, the Mayor of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Code for Durham Day in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to join me in thanking the Code for Durham team for their service to our community. Witness my hand on this fifteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-one, Stephen M. Shul, Mayor of Durham.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Ms. Ritchie, are you available to be heard?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Celeste Ritchie, and I'm a volunteer with Code for Durham. I'm very excited to be here working on the Record Expungement Project. So thank you so much to all of you for this honor. I really would love to thank the many members of Code for Durham, our brigade, that volunteers their time to help build better solutions. And that includes Dane Summers, Jeremy Freeman, Millie Starliper, David Eklund, and many, many more, as well as a longtime city partner and Code for Durham volunteer that probably a lot of you know, Laura Bydiger. The Record Expungement Project with Dear has been led for years by one of our brigade co-founders, Colin Copeland, as well as George Hellman and Rob Grease and others have joined in later times to help continue improving the tool. I also want to thank our government-side partners that dedicate themselves every day to improving the lives and making government work for our Durham community. And that includes Ryan Smith, Gina Raymond, Jessica Luong, DJ Door, Jacob Weisner, and many others that have been invaluable partners in developing the tool. And I'd love to read a quote from Gina Raymond about the impact that the petition generator tool has had. Quote, "The expulsion petition generator tool created by the Code for Durham volunteers is poised to usher in a new era of expulsion legal practice in North Carolina by helping attorneys quickly and accurately generate expulsion petitions for dismissed charges." During initial testing at the Dear offices in Durham, legal aid attorneys found that the tool can save hours of time preparing a single petition and significantly reduce the number of data entry errors. Instead of serving hundreds of clients each year, the tool has the potential to enable legal aid and the Dear program to serve thousands. This innovative tool was made possible by the unique partnership of volunteer coders and legal aid attorneys working closely for two years to integrate the nuances of expulsion law into a user-friendly design. The selfless dedication and quiet perseverance of these volunteers was inspiring to witness, and the tool's features have far surpassed what we as lawyers originally imagined was possible. We believe that the tool will dramatically expand the volume and accessibility of expulsion to our low-income clients. Appley named this tool not only generates petitions to expunge old charges, but generates second chance opportunities for thousands of our neighbors in Durham and across North Carolina to get better jobs and have better futures," end quote. So for potential government partners listening in tonight, we know that city budgets are tight and many departments are having to make three to five percent reductions at least. So want to just let you know that Code for Durham can help build solutions with fewer financial resources, especially given how reliant on digital tools we are in this pandemic time. And additionally, we're completely dedicated to open source or free and readily available software and data so that anyone looking to improve their community can reuse the software. With more in-depth partnership with the city, Code for Durham can be a way of engaging residents to identify and build solutions that make their lives better. So we look forward to partnering with all of you someday, and thank you again for this great honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Ms. Ritchie, and thank you, Councilmember Freeline. What a great organization, and it's really neat that we're honoring them tonight. And I love hearing all the partners that Code for Durham has worked with to make this expulsion work possible. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we'll now move on to announcements by members of the council. Councilmember Freeline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I heard Brian's name mentioned and just wanted to give Ryan and Megan a shout out for their new bundle of joy. So excited for him and Megan in this new leg of their journey. Ryan Smith has been instrumental. I mean, Councilmember Middleton shouts him out all the time for the help that he's given us with Mayors for Guaranteed Income. Also, the program that we were just talking about, the Dear program, is something that he spearheaded. Just, and you heard it there, just the intersection of technology and government. It's very, he's just a very important part of our community, and I'm really excited for his expanding family. So just wanted to shout him out.
Awesome shout out. Thank you. Yes, always wonderful when there's a new, a new baby in the world. All right, colleagues, other announcements. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and good evening, everyone, and to all our friends watching. Thank you, appears for that shout out. And we certainly know that thousands of hearts beat in sync with Ryan and Megan tonight as they welcome that wonderful arrival. So God bless them and their expanding family. I wanted to just take a moment, Mr. Mayor, to just make a couple of quick comments. It's no secret now in the city that last week I added my name to a group of citizens and residents that decided to bear arms, so to speak, and get the COVID nineteen vaccine in hopes of spurring a greater participation in our community. And I want to shout those leaders' names far more influential than mine, I think, and far more significant than mine. So I was humbled to be asked to participate in this. I want to say on behalf of them tonight, and I've spoken with a number of the leaders, that when we decided to do this, we knew that there may be some questions and concerns about the appearance of jumping line or appearance of getting out of turn or not waiting our turn to get the vaccine. And I want to say on their behalf tonight that what we have assessed, the cost of not doing it, far eclipsed any personal inconvenience or discomfort. I would also add that HIPAA would have been a better route to take to shield us. If this were about personal influence, we certainly wouldn't have had a press, wouldn't have had a press conference about it. No, the, the costs were far higher not to do this than we, than we thought to do it. It's important to say that it's hard to jump a line that doesn't exist. And far too many of our people have not gotten the COVID vaccine. And many of our seniors have not availed themselves, black seniors in particular, have not availed themselves of the vaccine. I want to say to folk who may be trying to convince people to get the vaccine. I've had a number of conversations, very poignant, sometimes painful conversations, particularly with seniors who don't share my last name but who hold pieces of my heart. Many of them remember the Tuskegee experiment. I believe it started in nineteen thirty-two. But a lot of folks forget that that, the Tuskegee experiment did not end until the early seventies. I think it was nineteen seventy-two, if my memory serves. So a lot of our seniors still remember that. And I saw a great pain and deep emotion. I heard it in their voices, many seniors I spoke to. So I want to say that, that the case for the mistrust of the medical establishment by many in the black community is as founded and is as compelling, perhaps more founded, more compelling than even the case we saw presented on the floor of the Senate last week. The pain is real and the fear is real. And I just want to say to those of us that are trying to encourage folk to be careful not to berate folk or try and shame people into getting the vaccine in our community because the fear is extremely real. And we should honor that fear and concern. And I want to tonight go on record saying, I, I get it. I totally understand how we've been hurt and how we've been mistreated. But I also want to say that I trust the brilliant black women that have been in the vanguard of the development of the vaccine and the rollout of the vaccine, who have vouched for the efficacy and safety of the vaccine. And me and a number of people thought, what more compelling case can be made than presenting our own bodies beyond just using our platforms to encourage people, but to actually put our bodies front and center to receive the vaccine? So for whatever it's worth, I hope that folk will gently and sensitively encourage our people to get the vaccine. I feel fine. Had a little soreness in my arm, but I'm doing well. Days later, I look forward to getting my second dose at the appointed time. I want to thank and give a big shout out to the Durham County Department of Health, who's been doing an amazing job and running an incredibly efficient and professional operation, treating people with kindness and dignity, respecting people's privacy, just a really smooth operation. So I'm going to shout all those folk out. I'm going to shout out my clerical colleagues and other leaders in the black community that have not only voiced the importance of getting the vaccine, but have demonstrated that, demonstrated it by getting, getting it themselves, sometimes at the risk of being critiqued. But as I said, the cost of not doing it is far higher than doing it. So I want to thank friends in the Department of Health for the opportunity to, to get the word out. And for those of you watching tonight, the vaccine doesn't mean that you can just stop doing all of the other important things, like wearing a mask, washing your hands, and maintaining social distance, and watching the orbits, who's in your orbit and not co-mingling orbits. So I want to encourage folk to do that. And I particularly want to say to, to black folk who may be concerned about it tonight. I trust it. I trust the black women that have developed it, helped develop it and pushed it. And I'm looking forward to getting the second dose. But I also honor the, the concern, the mistrust, and the scar tissue that we bear as a people as well. I want to give full honor to that tonight alongside with my endorsement of getting the vaccine. With that said, speaking of pioneering black women, and we inaugurated a black and Asian vice president, female woman in January. This is the last Monday night meeting of Black History Month. And while we did not have a proclamation this month, I did want to just mark the ending, at least our last Monday night meeting during Black History Month. I think a meeting before, the last meeting, I recited into record the second verse. Lift every voice and sing the great poem by James Weldon Johnson, who, which Congressman Clyburn of South Carolina is leading a push to make it not to replace the National Anthem, but to become the National Hymn of America, not replacing the anthem, but to become the National Hymn of America in recognition of Black History Month. And in lieu of a proclamation, as I close, I just want to recite into record the final verse of that great poem by James Weldon Johnson, offered as a hope for Durham. It says, "God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Thou who hast by thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met thee. Lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget thee. Shadowed beneath thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land." May God bless and protect our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Other words, colleagues, other announcements tonight. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Middleton. I, I had the same thought this evening, recognizing that we didn't have a proclamation. I missed it the first Monday and missed it again this Monday as well. But I did want to note that I appreciate your keeping us, keeping us on task on making sure we acknowledge the history of black folks who are in the African diaspora and just acknowledging that local, national, and international history of people of the African diaspora is important. I just wanted to note the many accolades of folks past and present that shine a light on the future. And just acknowledging the, the Durham magazine featured Dorian Bowden of BU Cafe and just noting how his contribution to Durham through this last tough year has been highlighted so many times. And often it's important to just note that this is, this is, this is the work of us all. And though I am very cognizant that we are all human beings, the history of black folks in this country is real, and the history of black folks worldwide has been, has been, like, there's been so much harm. And in the spirit of that, I also wanted to share that there, although I had notes that I don't want to go through. I wanted to also note that in the spirit of pressing the uncomfortable conversations around race in order to make systemic changes, I, and I had the opportunity to bring the resolution around Alhaj Malik El Shabazz reparations, reparations studies and Crown Act. And I would love to figure out how we move forward to bring a omnibus act resolution forward as well. Thanking Congressman Alma Adams and Congresswoman Laura Underwood and Senator Cory Booker and all the mental members of the Black Maternity Health Caucus for introducing that act last week. I, I just want to note that as a mother of three children, going through two pregnancies, noting that I did not want to do C-sections or have C-sections. I was kind of put, pushed into that position in both cases. And the pain is real, the work is real, and we've got a long way to go. And so I just wanted to leave that with you all before, and I had not submitted it as an item for work session, but I do want to make sure that it's on the radar for you all. I will also note that I did, we had a great budget retreat and a lot of the information shared around making sure that our black and brown businesses who are fast or among the fastest disappearing in our community, figuring out what it looks like to support them and in ways that are above and beyond what we've done so far. I'm hopeful that we'll get to some solutions, but I do want to encourage folks in the community, if you have ideas, to share them and to make sure that we hear them. I, I know that the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce held their annual meeting last week as well. And I think they did a great job of noting just how much of a shift everyone's made in business. And we're going to need them in the economies in order to keep, keep moving forward. And so I just wanted to hold that up. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any further announcements? Councilmember Reese?
I really have an announcement, but I just wanted to say, lift every voice and sing is so much easier to sing than the National Anthem. Maybe we should think about raising our sights there because there's a couple of notes in the National Anthem you just can't really get to unless you're like really good or willing to look really bad. I, I've never had, I've never tried to sing it in front of a crowd. Don't call Durham Bulls. I just say no. But, but I'm just saying that if we're thinking about things, that might be something to consider. I'll, I'll reach out to, to my local congressman on that. The other thing I wanted to say is, Councilmember Middleton, I really appreciate your willingness because you're right, people are going to yak no matter what you do. And the fact that you're willing to, to put yourself out there to do that, despite whatever the groups and the definitions of the groups say, I, I'm just really, I'm really grateful to you. I hope you'll share the phone number that you got with your friends in the public, Department of Public Health because the way the state is distributing vaccine, the more local vaccination events that they, that communities put together that are geared toward populations that have traditionally been underserved and are under vaccinated as a proportion of their demographic, demographic representation, those, those counties get extra vaccine for those specific events. And so I think there's lots more room and lots more arms on this council of folks who represent black and brown communities to be out there, to be out front, to get their names in the paper for, for being that, for getting vaccinated just because it's so important. You know, and quite frankly, white folks aren't having that problem. White people are going to get vaccinated in great numbers, so there's no need for me to do that. But I hope that, that we can get some of our colleagues involved. Mr. Mayor, I know you're in group two and have already taken the first shot. So anyway, I just wanted to put a plug in for that because I know that, that we're going to need to keep sharing the message that you, Councilmember Middleton, brought to us so clearly and forcefully that the concerns are very real and legitimate, but that on balance, this is the right thing to do. So I think the more of these types of events and the more that we can be out there doing that, the better. That's all I wanted to say. So anyway. But, but looking to lift every voice really is an easier song. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My thanks to my good friend and colleague. You follow our lead on the every voice. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Just really quickly wanted to highlight one of those community events that was held, if I'm not mistaken, last Tuesday. It was a joint effort between the Latino Cooperative Credit Union, Asentrispano, Lesamia, Latin Nineteen, and Duke Health. I apologize if I left anyone out in that long list, but I know it was a really great community effort. And they were able to get, I think, a hundred and fifty Latino Latinx residents over, over sixty-five vaccinated. And I hope that we are able to continue doing that. And I know that we may need to put resources to that. But it was extremely successful and just so much gratitude to the folks who helped organize it.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other announcements, colleagues? All right. Thank you very much. I will now turn to our priority items. Madam Manager, good evening. Any priority items tonight by our city manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, members of the Durham City Council. I do have three priority items for you this evening. Agenda item number five, CASA two seven zero two, North Duke Street Affordable Rental Project Funding Award and Pre-Development Agreement. The motion and attachment number one were updated. Agenda item number thirteen, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four, employee benefits pursuant to council's request. Additional information has been provided in attachments number fifteen and number sixteen. Additional information has been provided in attachments number 15 and number 16. And finally, agenda item number 20, Fiscal Year 2021-22, City Council Budget Requests pursuant to council's request. Additional information has been provided in attachment number two, located under the priority items by the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk section of the agenda. Thank you very much. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Manager. Madam Attorney, good evening. Do you have any priority items tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. It's good to see you all this evening. The City Attorney's Office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Madam Clerk, good evening. Do you have any items tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmembers. The City Clerk's Office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, colleagues, we're now going to move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of items that have previously been worked on by the council. An item can be removed by the, from the consent agenda by a member of the public or a member of the council, and if so, will be considered at the end of the meeting. The consent agenda can be approved by a single vote of the council. I'll first read the items. Item one, Boards, Committees, and Commissions attendance reports for January 1, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Item two, Durham City and County Environmental Affairs Board appointment. Item three, Amendment FY 2021 Budget and Other Grant and Calvert Project Ordinances and Amendments. Item five, CASA 2702, North Duke Street Affordable Rental Project Funding Award and Pre-Development Agreement. Item six, Operating Support Grant and Reinvestment Partners in the Amount of $110,000 of FY 2021 Dedicated Housing Funds, DHF. Item seven, Project Access of Durham County City Dedicated Housing Funds, DHF, Contract for Rapid Rehousing Services. Item eight, Contract for Installation of Signalized Pedestrian Upgrades. Item nine, First Amendment to Contracts 17430, Supplemental Agreement Number Two with Kim Lee Horn Associates Durham County Transit Plan. Item 10, Construction Services with Progressive Contracting Company, Inc. for the Solid Waste Management Scale House Break Room Project. Item 11, Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board 2019-20 Annual Report. Item 12, Interlocal Agreement with the Durham County Soil and Water Conservation District. Item 13, 2021-2024 Employee Benefits. Item 14, Grant Duke University Health Systems Office, Community, and Local Government Relations. Item 15, Housing Appeals Board FY 20 Annual Report. Item 16, Recreation Advisory Committee Commission 2020 Annual Report. Item 17, Amendment to Ordinance Number 14379 Establishing a Schedule of Non-consensual Towing Fees for Public Initiated Tows. Item 18, Interlocal Agreement with Durham County for Purchase of Salt. Item 19, Contract with Rubicon Global LLC for In-Vehicle Technology. Item 22, Recovery Renewal Task Force, RTF, Funding Request for Phase Four, Back on the Bull Public Health Campaign. All righty, colleagues, you have heard the consent agenda and I'll now accept the motion for its approval.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Reese. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Caballero?
Aye.
Councilmember Freelon?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Colleagues, it's really good to see you. I will see you again on Thursday. I'm now going to declare this meeting to the Durham City Council, adjourned 7:33 PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Saying such a thing could be possible.
One for the books, Mr. Mayor.
This feels, this feels like a setup.
About "Lift Every Voice," we could have been out here by 7:30. Sorry, everybody. Sorry, my bad. Totally my bad.
Remix.
I like the, the shock in Councilmember Freelon's face, though. It was worth it.
No way.